So now we're live and people can start joining in the public.
All right.
The numbers are great.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome. Thank you for being here this evening. We're just going to give everyone a couple of minutes to get into our virtual community space. Then Mr. Baldon, how are we doing with attendance? Does it look like we have a decent number? Or should I wait a couple of minutes?
Give me like two minutes. It's
Okay.
Thirty-nine right now.
Okay.
Says fifty-four on the participants, Matt.
Fifteen panelists and thirty-nine.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Bob always keeps me straight.
Yes.
Well, should I make sure panelists too or not?
Who?
Keisha.
Oh, yes. I couldn't understand what you were saying.
Sorry.
You know, Principal Schmell gave me a CD of our students. The CD that they recorded, I should have had that this evening to play the music intro. So so thank you guys for your patience. We're just gonna wait maybe another minute and get started. All right. I think I'm gonna go ahead and get started because we do have a pretty packed agenda this evening. So good evening, everyone. How are you? I'm Dr. Carol Kelly. I'm the proud superintendent of Princeton Public Schools. And I would like to welcome all of you to our virtual community town hall. I would like to, before we get started, to introduce members of the team. And I think it's probably easy easier, guys, if the administrators who are on the team, on the panel, could just take the mic and introduce themselves. If you could give your name and also your role. And I will start at the bottom of my screen. I see Dana.
Hi, good evening. Dana Karas and I am the Director of School Counseling Services.
All right. I see one of our principals, I believe, from Community Park School.
Hi, good evening. Denise Grujaz, Principal at Community Park Elementary School.
All right. I see our fabulous. She's keeping everything straight in terms of keeping us safe with COVID protocols as well as leading our special ed department. Mickey?
Hi, good evening. I'm Mickey Chris Foley. I'm the Director of Student Services.
And then across the district, I see her near and far from the high school over all the way over to Johnson Park Elementary School, our math supervisor.
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Tidwell. I'm District Supervisor, K through twelve math.
And without, you can't have mathematics without humanities. So one of our humanities supervisor.
Good evening. Keisha Smith Carrington, Supervisor of Humanities, grades P through six.
And this gentleman is my very best friend. He keeps me on the straight and narrow. Our Board Secretary slash Business Administrator.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. Matt Bolden, pleasure to be here.
And we all love this individual. We all know who he is. He, he's, he keeps us all straight and narrow. Do you know who we're talking about, Dr. Ginsberg?
Thank you. Bob Ginsberg. I'm the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction. Thank you, Carol.
All right. And extraordinaire, Public Information Officer.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Collier. I do communications for the district.
All right. Let me see. Are there any other? It's really hard for me to see. We're going to introduce our very special guest in just a few minutes. Did I not introduce any of the administrators? Did I get everyone?
You missed me, Dr. Kelly.
Oh, wait. Oh, my gosh. She has several hats that she wears. So Maritula, would you like to do the introduction for all of your titles?
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. Hello, everyone. Good evening. I'm Redula Bajaj. I'm the Supervisor, K to twelve for Science, Professional Development and Assessment for the District.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. All right. So that, that is our admin team who will be joining me in just a few moments to help answer the questions that you submitted. And our goals, as you know, for SY twenty-two were introduced at a recent Board of Education meeting and will be approved later this month. Before I get started, I'd like to give you a quick review of our four commitments. And then I would also like to just thank all of you for submitting your outstanding questions. After the quick review, we're going to be using a format for our question and answer, which is one where our Princeton High School students who are also on the panel with us this evening, they are going to read the questions that you have submitted. And the appropriate administrator, after I take a step at answering, will help to also answer the questions this evening. Please note that we have a lot of really great questions that were submitted to us. And if we do not answer all of the questions before seven PM, please note that we will reach out to you individually so that your question is answered. So before I give the quick overview, I would like to ask our high school students if they would please take the mic and just introduce themselves. Let's start with Ida.
Hi, my name is Ida Sadek. I am a junior here at PHS.
Hi, Ida. Thank you so much for volunteering this evening. We appreciate it. What about L?
You might mean me. I'm Eli.
Oh, Eli. I need my reading glasses on. Let me just go get them.
Perfectly fine. Um, hi, I'm Eli. My pronouncer, Dave M., and I am a senior at Princeton High School.
Thank you, Eli. Jocelyn. Jocelyn or?
It's Joyce Lynn. Yes. Hello, everyone. My name is Joyce Lynn, and I am also a senior at Princeton High School.
Thank you, Joyce Lynn. Melanie?
Hi, I'm Melanie Ramos. I am a sophomore at Princeton High School.
Okay. Is Cody here this evening?
Yeah, I'm here.
Hi, Cody.
Hi, I'm also a senior at Princeton High School.
All right. Kiara?
Hi, my name is Kiara Torres Olivas, and I am a senior at Princeton High School.
Thank you for being here. And what about Ned? All right. Ned's not here this evening, but that's, that's okay. So let's just go ahead and get started. So once again, a really brief overview, and then we're going to jump right into our questions and answer period. The team and I are really excited this evening to reshare a brief overview of the four commitments around our district's success, culture, and vision based upon the feedback that we've received from our district and school leadership, our family stakeholders, and even some of our students. Now, we're at the point where each leader have drafted goals for their respective school or their respective departments that are aligned back to either one or four, up to four of our commitments. This is one excerpt of a team priorities that was designed by our science department. To briefly review each of the commitments, I'm going to just take you really quickly through each commitments and also the alignment to the district goals and give you really quickly a couple of examples that I've seen in either the school or the departmental goals that have been submitted to date. Commitment number one is to support the district and the district's work towards viewing professional learning as less of a thing that we do and more a culture of who we are. So you see here where it says every educator, every day, has job embedded opportunities to innovate and refine their practices. This is aligned to district goal, which says inspire innovation and experimentation in both teaching and learning. Some examples that I've seen in either the school or department goals are things such as in the humanities goals where they are going to have staff working this year doing some staff development work with Teachers College. Or in the mathematics department goals, you see actions in terms of the math coaching cycles that the staff members will be doing to refine their practices. For commitment area number two, we want to provide high-quality educational experiences for all of our students. This is aligned to district goals promoting equity and access. Some examples, again, with the science department, they're going to continue their work with interdisciplinary connections as well as project-based learning. And our humanities departments from K through twelve are doing a deeper dive and reviewing the curriculum materials that students are using to ensure that they are inclusive and our students see themselves in our curriculum materials and curriculum. For commitment area number three, we are focused on establishing structures and programs that foster positive relationships and environments where all students and teachers feel a sense of belonging. This is aligned to district goals promoting a culture of care, connectedness, and communication in schools. Some examples that you would see in all of our schools, they have a social, emotional, and wellbeing target as part of their goals. And also across the district and all of our schools, you'll see efforts being made to focus on student self-efficacy, sense of belonging, and students' emotional care and wellbeing. And finally, commitment area number four is to ensure systemic use of data to make continual improvements to the services that we provide to our students and to our staff. This is aligned to the district goal where every child is known. We promote relationships and instruction that discovers and cultivates the unique gifts, talents, and interests that each student possesses. Examples that you will see in terms of actions to align back to this commitment across our departments and schools is that we will be using various forms of data, including narratives, stories, surveys, as well as quantitative data to learn about students' experiences and to make changes based on what we are learning. You'll also see that every school has a target or a goal to specifically attend to student attendance because we know that reducing chronic absenteeism is a really strong indicator for student achievement overall. All right. That was a brief overview. So I'm going to stop sharing at this point, and I'm going to turn the floor back over to our Elizabeth. Should I turn it back over to you or Matt to introduce our students again as well as call on the students to ask the questions?
Um, yes, I think the students have the questions, and I think the one is, is Ida.
All right, Ida.
Hi. So can you guys talk more about helping teachers to be their best? How will PPS make teachers feel supported and challenged?
That is a really great. I will start with my response. I think one of the things that we really want to do with our staff is provide the supporting conditions for them where, as we said with commitment number one, that they have opportunities every day to be able to connect with each other and also collect, connect with the school leaders for their department or their school around the work. So right now, our educators have had an opportunity to think about individual learning, professional learning goals that are tied back to their department or their school goals. And each leader for either the school or the department have been meeting with the educators to provide feedback on those goals. So that is one example. In addition to the opportunities of getting together with other educators either within their department or across their grade level, we also, again, under the direction of Maritula Bajaj, one of her many hats that she wears is she helps us as a school district to organize our professional learning days. And the summer, the winter, spring, we have learning institutes where staff members can teach classes that they have shown that they have excelled in. So I think those are just a couple of the ways, and I don't know, Maritula, if you wanted to add more in terms of professional learning?
Sure. As Dr. Kelly said, we have three institutes that run throughout the school year where, you know, we have the teachers leading the session. So peers, learning from peers is what we prefer. At Princeton Public Schools, we also have consultants coming in depending upon the need. And we also have a number of professional development days during the course of the year during which, you know, as per the needs identified in each department or in each building, we work collaboratively to provide the supports that are needed for the teachers. Also, during the course of the school year, you know, we have common planning periods where teachers and supervisors, they work collaboratively to work on identified needs. So there are plenty of opportunities where, you know, we, we work collaboratively to provide the PD that is necessary for the teachers and staff.
And one of the things that we really want to do, like moving forward, is being able to provide to the staff more common planning time, particularly those staff members that are teaching the same students or the same content area. So we would love to be able to do that. But I think that learning not only takes place when we are talking about instruction or student learning, but learning also takes place when we come together and we debrief on how things went. So at the end of all of our, I would say, the majority of our meetings, we always ask ourselves, what worked well? And what are some things that we would like to do moving forward to improve? So I think like just taking those moments to reflect and to use what was learned from that process is also an opportunity for us to provide every educator an opportunity every day to have job embedded learning from their practice. I'm not sure who has the next question. Is that Eli?
Yep, I have next question. So how will the district take action to increase equity and access for disabled students, including moving towards co-teaching methods in the classroom?
So how will the teacher, how will the district take action to increase equity and, and access for our special needs students? So I can start, and then I will turn the mic over to Mickey Crisafelli. I think that one of the things that we strive to do for all of our students is to provide access to rigorous content. So I think it's really important for the district to continue to support the staff with enabling them, whether it's through the curricular materials, the resources, or through the design of our curriculum, where they have the resources in the, the general ed classroom setting to be able to provide the necessary supports for all students to have access to that content. I know one of the things that we, the district, has talked about even prior to my arrival is having a multi-tiered systems of support, which would allow us at that, that classroom level to have a universal design for learning. But in addition to that, to have clearly defined resources in place for students that might need even greater intensive supports. One of those may be the co-teaching model, which the district does have in place. So Mickey, I don't know if you want to provide more information around what the district is currently doing and where we're heading to?
Sure. First, related to where we're heading, we're going to continue to look at opportunities where we can provide co-teaching models in rigorous learning. We've taken some strides in the past year. We've looked at the results of the Special Education Program Review. So we've added some courses, and we've been adding every year at the elementary level, and we've been adding at the middle school and especially at the high school level. So, you know, we're really happy about that, excited about that. Co-teaching is, you know, two teachers, a special education and a general education working together for all students. So of course, our goal is that each person in the co-teaching pair has knowledge of the content, and everybody can address the learning needs of the students. And that takes a lot of support. It takes a lot of support by the special education supervisor and the general education supervisor to work with the pair. So how do, are we addressing it? We talk about it in department meetings. We offered last summer, there was a session in the Summer Institute. We're going to be looking at flex PD opportunities for our teachers. We're going to be looking at possibility of bringing some of our exemplar teachers in co-teaching together to create PD for future trainings. And we are going to have a professional development for our admin team in the next month or so, probably two months, where we're, we'll all come together and make sure, kind of like doing a, you know, an expectation reset to make sure that we're on the same page about what our expectations for co-teaching are. And all of that focus is to help our students achieve to the best that they possibly can achieve with all the appropriate supports in place.
I think that's great. I, you know, I think everything that, that Mickey just said, however, really, really depends on all of us as a community. And really, all of us having the belief that every child, every child can learn at high levels. And for us to have a heart for inclusion and for every student to be included in that, that setting. So I think it really begins with the hearts and minds, the culture of a place, so that that supportive, supporting condition can be the foundation for all of those other more, the, the technical work that Mickey just, just described. So and Elizabeth, do you want to ask us the next question since Ned's not here?
I think, I think Joyce Lynn has that one, the, the next one.
So the next question is, does the district have plans and please to address the rising epidemic of anxiety, depression, and cyberbullying?
That is a great question. We definitely have mechanisms in place to determine like what the situation is. But I'm going to turn the floor, I think, the mic over to our new Director of Guidance, who works really closely with our school counselors. And I know that their department goals are based on this, this area of mental health.
Yeah. So, you know, one of, at the heart of these initiatives is really the goal of social, emotional learning and really getting to know students for who they are. Every individual has a different story and brings something different to the table. So as a school counseling department, our efforts will really focus around getting to know students, educating our school community, our students, our staff, our parents, the larger community, about all of our resources that are available to them, and really putting some things into place to really take that stigma away from mental health that may be a deterrent to some students to getting the help that they need. So as a collective, the school counselors are really going to be working on this approach that is looking at students from the classroom level, the school-wide, and really from the entire district to really support that effort and to de-stigmatize mental health concerns and to really educate everyone in our school community.
Thank you. I'm not sure who has the next question.
Melanie is next.
Okay.
Um, so I was wondering if you could talk a bit about the math program? Does the district anticipate any changes in the elementary, middle, or high school curriculum?
I'm going to turn this question over to our math supervisor, Stephanie Tidwell.
Thank you. Thanks for the question, Melanie. So I don't know whether you're aware, but we started last year with an evaluation of our entire math program with a math review. Our process last year was just to review our actual written curriculum. And so in the process of reviewing our actual written curriculum, we found certain areas in which we need to improve the written curriculum, but we knew that the next step would be to see how that curriculum is actually being implemented in the classrooms. So this year, what we're doing is we actually have learning walks that are happening with myself and a gentleman that you may see either at the middle school or the high school because he worked with the elementary schools last year. His name is Dr. Eric Milu. And we are in the process now of identifying what's written, what's being taught, and where we want to create mathematical experiences for the students to help us to understand where we need to tweak the curriculum. So we are looking at improving the curriculum to give students more experience. We don't want math to just be computational. We are really focused on making math engaging so that we can see your thinking and also hear and listen to your thought process about how you describe your mathematics and your mathematical experiences. So we are looking at what we will need to do. I will say that this is a process. So it's nothing that will happen today and possibly not tomorrow. But we aren't looking at what's going to be best for all students and also looking to get feedback from students regarding courses that they may be interested in.
Thank you for that.
And Cody is next.
Hi, so I was just wondering, um, many parents feel that it's essential to hire tutors to keep up, and this presents equity issues. So how will Princeton Public Schools address this?
I'm going to start, and then maybe the administrators that wanted the call. We could have like a little conversation about this. I think it, Cody, I think it really depends on the, the, the why individuals feel that they have to get the tutors. So I think we would probably want to probe a little bit more to determine the why. One of the, one of the, the areas that the district is looking at in terms of like listening to stories and narratives are using various tools. So we, we will be engaging with our students and with our families using tools where we can probe a little bit further on questions such as this. If they are getting tutors to, perhaps, you know, their, their child has like a, a future goal where they feel that it would help them towards that goal, I think that that's one thing. Versus if they feel that they need a tutor just to be able to do well in that, that course, then I think that that's something that we will want to find out and then begin to probe a little bit further so that we can address it. So that, that would be my response, that that's a really great question that would actually raise some more questions where we would like need to go out and do a little bit more probing with our families, with our students to see if we could see any patterns or trends to help us determine the, the where and the why. And then based on that information, we can move forward with a plan of action. So I don't know, Dr. Ginsberg, or if anyone else would have a different response to that question.
I can follow up on what you said. Every month, Dr. Kelly and some of the rest of us meet with what we call the PTO. what we call the PTOC, the PTO Council, which is made up of all the presidents of the PTOs from all the schools. And actually, this question came up amongst them. And that's why Dr. Kelly was talking about the fact that there may be different reasons why people are seeking tutors. And before we can address the problem, we need to know what those reasons are. So we actually have been talking about doing a survey so we can find out from parents and students those who are having tutors, why they're having tutors, and then there may be solutions that we can help within the school system to address the needs as why people are having tutors.
Okay, great. And I think Kiara is up next.
Hello. So how is the district planning to minimize or eradicate the distributions of COVID quarantines? Especially for children who are too young to be vaccinated? Would the district consider a test to stay program?
That is a good question. I, I can start off and then Mickey, I don't know if you want to chime in. So one of the ways that we can, I guess mitigate, I don't, you know, I, I'm going to say mitigate because of the way that COVID can be transmitted. I'm not a hundred percent sure that we would be able to eradicate it. But in terms of mitigating the number of students that would need to be quarantined, one of the things that the district is moving forward with for any student, but largely a focus on our unvaccinated students is that we are planning to start a screening, testing program. And that should help us, we are hoping by that, by our students and families participating in that, identifying students that may be asymptomatic and positive for COVID before they come to school. Because you know what happens when students are identified as being a positive COVID case? Our, our nurses and school staff then begin to do a process called contact tracing. And the contact tracing, those individuals, if they are unvaccinated, would need to remain out of school for a certain number of days. They can test anywhere from, is it day five, Mickey?
Right. And day five, they can test with a PCR test and then return after seven days or day eight, they can return.
Yeah. And if they decide not to test, then they would have to stay out for 10 days. We can also help to mitigate the number of students who need to be quarantined by continuing to wear a mask, by continuing to follow the, the travel guidelines, by continuing to, you know, exercise, social distancing. You know, all of those things that are in place to help really mitigate individuals from getting COVID. In terms of the tests to stay, I know that that has been a question that has come up frequently. We currently are not, we don't currently have plans to put that in place. We honestly believe that it's a less conservative approach and that even when students are considered a close contact, they may test negative and come back to school and and we've actually have seen this. And by day five or six, they test positive for, for COVID. And if they're, if they have, if we had a test to stay where they can come back to school, they may like come back to school and be positive and therefore we would have to have more students that are quarantined. We continue to ask this question of our medical experts, the individuals with the public health department, as well as the district's physician. And to date, we've not decided to move toward, to move toward that. That might change as the situation with COVID changes. But right now, we're not planning to use, to use that model. Mickey, did I miss anything? Do you think?
No, I think you did a great job describing. I think one of the greatest things is if, you know, we're all really diligent about wearing our masks, maintaining that social distance. And, you know, we have a great vaccination rate at the middle school, high school. That has made a big difference. And I'm, we're hearing from our health professionals that in a few weeks, the FDA should be approving the vaccine for younger students. So, you know, of course, that's a family decision, but if more and more students get vaccinated, especially at the younger level, that will again, will reduce the number of students who have to quarantine.
Thank you for that question.
Carol, I just wanted to add so the public knows that we actually have a standing meeting every Wednesday at 10 o'clock where our Health and Safety Task Force meets, which is made up of the prin, the principals and a bunch of other, other school officials, as well as Dr. Helmick, who's our school physician, Jeff Grosser, who's the municipal health officer, Kathy Corwin, who's the, his assistant, and, and other folks who have medical background as well, so that we keep up. And, and any questions that come up, any concerns that come up, we deal with them every week. And then we're also on 24 hour call service with them as well.
They have been a huge support. Okay, go ahead, Elizabeth.
Oh, thank you. The, Ida, would you mind asking the next two questions?
Of course. So can you address the lack of parity in homework from teacher to teacher same subject and class? We can, can we standardize homework expectations for the same class?
That is a fantastic question. I would say that one of the things that we can do is through feedback like this. You know, when we hear it, then the, either the principal or the department supervisor can then talk to the, the teachers as, as a team to be able to determine where, where are the areas, you know, if, if someone's teaching the same content. We want teachers to be able to have, you know, some freedom in terms of their being able to bring themselves to that course. But at the same time, we would want to like have some level of consistency in terms of expectations and things of that nature so that the course is the course is the course regardless of what instructor and individual might have. So I think the best information for us, most helpful to us is having information like that. I'll give you, for instance, there was a question that was raised recently at the high school with one of the departments. And when the supervisor got that feedback, she immediately met with the teachers who taught that same course. So I, I, I would say like my response to that question is yes, we can deal with the, what did you say, the inequities with the amount of homework? If we like know about the situation. So I would just encourage individuals to let us know, let your principal know or, you know, the school counselor and we will like get in contact with the appropriate department lead or the school leader and they would have that conversation with the teachers. Would any of the supervisors, I don't know, or Bob have, or Denise, anything that I did not share that you think?
I, I think it's mostly a secondary school. And I do know that actually Mr. Shamil, the high school principal sends out a sort of a notice to his staff every morning. And I just noticed in today's, in this morning's notice, he did speak to that issue with the staff, asking teachers who are teaching, as, as you said, similar courses, not just the department that you're referring to, but all teachers, if they're teaching similar courses, to touch base with one another on a frequent basis to share what their, what the amount of homework they're asking, what they're asking students to do so they can equalize what's going on and take a, he, his comments also said, you know, take a look, you know, can you lop off two or three problems in, in a, in a particular assignment and, and still have helped the kids to learn and reinforce what they've been doing. So I think everybody is, is aware of that this is an issue.
Thank you. And I know one of the things that Elizabeth has been looking at as well is a tool called Let's Talk. Because I think to say to the community or our students, you know, let us know if, you know, you have that concern. Sometimes people, right? They don't necessarily feel comfortable with letting us know directly for whatever reason. So having a tool like, like a Let's Talk where individuals can somewhat anonymously let us know of concerns. But we, you know, if we have the information, we would love to address it where, where possible.
Oh, great. Ida, do you want to do the next one also?
Of course. Please elaborate how as a district, you can work toward adding the international back glory program?
I can take a stab at it and then I'm, Dana probably is like, oh no, don't take a look at me. But I'm going to turn the floor over to Dana. I, I would say my, my former district was just an elementary district. It was K eight and both of our middle schools were authorized IB schools. So I am a fan of IB. And I think sometimes IB is more of a philosophy than it is a thing. It's, it is more than just adding some courses to the high school docket. It is a, a belief that, you know, that we learn best by having interdisciplinary connections. It is a belief that, you know, you learn in order to like use that knowledge to help others, whether it's your classroom, your school, your town, your state, your country, the world. So service learning is a huge component of it. It's a philosophy where you attend to the academics as well as the metacognition and students like being very reflective about who they are and, and how they learn best. It is a belief where you feel that students should be exposed to more than one language, you know, so it's language one, language two. So there, there are a lot of really great things, you know, in terms of that, that philosophy. It's something that could be introduced, not just at the high school, but like from the primary years to the middle years and high school. It happens to have a high school component called the diploma pro, program. And I think a lot of people, when you think of IB, you automatically think the diploma program, which is an incredibly rigorous, it, it is all rigorous, right? But the diploma program is like what people go to first. I do know of high schools that can offer both AP and IB. The process of becoming an authorized school, just based on my experience, it's over years. And it, it takes several years before you are considered authorized. It also takes commitment and an investment by the community and the Board of Education and the professional learning and the redesign of your curriculum in terms of the, the organizational structure. So, but I, I would, as superintendent, I would fully support if that's the direction that the community and the staff would like to go. I'm a huge proponent of AP when it's like taught in a similar fashion. And a huge, I am a huge advocate for IB as well. So I don't know if you wanted to add something that I didn't say?
Yeah. The only thing I would add is that in previous years, there was a committee that had been established where community members, staff, students were engaged in conversation around the rigor, the programming at the high school level. Obviously with an IB program, because it does have those different components that do include an elementary and middle school and a high school component, we would need to enlarge that group. So we are in the, currently in the process of looking to revamp that group so that we can begin to have conversations around what that could look like in our school community because we do have such a rich AP program currently in place and how that could either complement it, enhance our programming, provide even greater opportunities and access to our students. So it is something that we are definitely, as, as Dr. Kelly pointed out, very willing to explore. But again, she also pointed out, it is a multi-year process to get to that point where it could be fully integrated.
Yep. And there are other avid, there are, there are other avenues as well. But I think often people think either, either or, we're of the mindset is a both and because not everything fits, you know, not every, every student. So I think it's that variety would be great. Elizabeth, any other questions?
Yeah, we, I think we have three more questions. And Eli, would you be able to do the next one?
Sure. So going back to the commitments that you talked about in the beginning of the meeting, commitment number one refers to supporting professional learning and providing job embedded opportunities for educators to innovate and refine their practices. How is this applied to principal supervisors, superintendents and the Board of Education as a whole?
All right. I love that question. So three letters, PLN, professional learning networks. I think it's really important for every educator to have that. So in terms of the, the Board of Education, the Board of Ed is they learn, right? They've, they've had so far to date, one retreat. They have one coming up, learning retreat. They have one coming up in January. In addition to that, the board, every October, there's statewide convention with workshops, things of, things of that nature. The same thing for superintendents. I'm a part of the New Jersey Superintendent's Network. I am a part of not just myself, but other educators, and there are several students on this panel. The Building Equitable Learning Environments Bell Network or Design Team. So there's learning there. You know, I think it's really important for our, our building principals to have not just the support from the district, but also each other's support. So, and Denise can attest to this, they do weekly huddles with the superintendents where they're learning from each other. It's just a quick 15 minute call. We have probably meetings, at least as Bob said, every Wednesday, focused on health and safety. Every other week, you know, each month, we have an instructional focus. And then the other, every other Monday, we have like an operational tactical focus. So the, you, you set up your meetings and your the cadence of meetings and your structures where you are learning during those meetings based upon the work that you're doing. I meet monthly with every principal, with the individuals who report into the superintendent at the cabinet level to, I will be now reviewing how they are doing with the progress on their goals. But our work is about the learning and we are learning so that we can support the goals that we have for our students. So that is what it would look like at that level. And we would hope to provide those same supporting conditions for our staff because when our practices improve, it is helping our students.
Okay, great. Was, did anyone else want to comment on that? Or can, can we go to the next question? Joyce Lynn, do, do you want to ask the next question?
So commitment number two relates to, to release to providing high quality educational experiences for all students. What are the steps of accountability that will make this possible from the classroom to valley road?
Can you repeat that again?
Yes. Commitment number two relates to providing high quality educational experiences for all students. What are the steps of accountability that will make this possible from the classroom to valley road?
I will start and then I will definitely turn the mic over. I think you know, my mindset often is what is not measured or monitored may not get done. So I, I, I'm just a really strong proponent of being So I I I'm just a really strong proponent of being really clear with what the goals are. You know, that they are, that there is a clear measurable target, like target or results that you're you're seeking. And that, you know, that you have a process in place to monitor those results. I also feel that it's important to take reflective pause breaks. At least in the middle of the year and perhaps at the end of the year to do a reflective look back on what have we accomplished and what have we learned through our activities? So I would suggest whether it's at the district level or every school and department that perhaps around January-ish or so and then May, May, the end of May-ish or so that we're all having a report out to our public, whatever our public might be. Just communicating here, here were like our actionable, you know, our smart goals. And here are the results and this is what we learned from our action. So I think like that communication cycle is one of the things that you could do to show the accountability. The other thing I think like probably more frequently would be using our weekly communications to the, you know, to the community or to the staff. Perhaps the use of the district's website, social media. You know, really sharing out the snippets of the, the activities that are related back to those goals. I don't know if there's anyone else that would have anything else to say for that question? Okay, thank you, Elizabeth. Is that it?
Then we have one last question. Melanie, would you be able to ask that last question?
Yes. So regarding commitment number three, what steps will PPS take to address issues of racism, homophobia and other hates, even if it happens out of campus?
These are really, really, really good questions. So I think and and Denise, perhaps you could help me with this and and Bob. I really sincerely believe that our team has deep commitment with modeling and establishing routines where we're trying to bring the community together and we're trying to foster relationships. Not just adult to adult or student to student, but student to adult as well. And I really, really strongly believe that when things are said or done that are hurtful, harmful, traumatic, whether it's in school or outside of school. I really, really, I really believe that our school leaders working in in tangent with supervisors, those of us that are here at Valley Road, that we will come together, maybe even tap into resources in the community to come up with a a plan to, to deal with, I'm gonna call it that crisis. Because it really would be a crisis. And the reason why I have those beliefs is I know that there are educators on staff who have designed professional learning. Is that correct, Keisha? Who've designed like professional learning opportunities for us? Where we're coming on the the same page in terms of being more literate in terms of certain situations. I know I could say that because I have, I have, I know that I've only worked here since July. But I have seen up close and personal the care that our building principals have for our staff and for our students. So I, I just really believe that, and I hope that it, you know, the situation will never come, come to pass. But I really believe that it's a team that would come together because we have at the forefront, the wellbeing and the, the, the care of every student that that we serve. And I don't know if anyone else, Dana or Keisha, Denise?
I'll add something. It, there is a state law where that we have to report instances of harassment, intimidation and bullying. And that, that sort of starts off sounding as if it's a punitive kind of approach, but actually the district is committed to restorative practices where we work together, not, not to have negative consequences as a result of incidents might occur. But where we try to bring people together and restore relationships and and the standing that everybody has with one another. And so I think that's approach, that's part of the approach that that Carol is talking about.
I think the other thing that I have seen is the openness that the, the building principals, not just the principals, but the supervisors as well. A lot of people have the component of listening to student voice and their goals this year. And, you know, at the high school, Principal, Principal Schmel has the student advisory that you have the, some of the supervisors, when they're, they're planning to do the learning walks. They're planning to specifically ask students like how, you know, like really trying to get from students, like what are your for real lived experiences? I know through the Bell Network, the, the survey tool, Copilot Elevate, that we probably have more teacher volunteers than seat, possible seats who are planning to use that tool to listen to the voices of the, the students. We, we, I think we all recognize that with that question, there's certainly some work to do, right? But I think it's the will, the willingness that I'm seeing of the adults, the, the leaders on this call and some who are not on this call to be able to address those concerns when we listen to those narratives and learn about it or when those instances are brought to our attention.
Yeah, I would just like to also add one of the things in addition to the more proactive pieces that Dr. Kelly was referencing regarding the professional learning that we have. We also are doing revisions in our curriculum and including in our curriculum PD looks at how to not only diversify our curriculum, but more importantly, how to support building community in our classrooms. So that our focus is on building relationships with our students and making sure that our students and our teachers are able to have conversations across cultures and other identities. And so that work is also going to help to be a way to prevent some of the incidents that the question speaks to.
Oh, I think you're on mute, Denise.
The space bar, I guess it doesn't work here. Just one other thing that's new this year and I was part of the pilot last year through our evaluation framework, which is the Danielson model. There has been a bit of revamping around that tool. And it provides for, you know, honest look at, at that aspect of education. And it's part of the evaluation of, you know, of, of all of us and all the classroom teachers. So it's becoming more part of our sort of daily diet of, of, of work. And if I could just say, it's so nice to see a couple of my former students on this call. So, so it's really nice to see you all and clearly we've, we've, we've done something right.
Absolutely. Some, some of our students have been able to. Oh, yes. Someone said, am I able to chime in with the comment? Yes.
Yeah. So one of the things that I wanted to say, just in terms of student involvement, it would have been a great to be able to see questions from students as well. I knew these questions were coming.
Same thing.
And the one thing that I did.
You're taking my thunder away.
Especially when seeing, talking about the IB program. I know that we already have AP and in terms of AP, they, those kinds of courses cause a lot of competition, a lot of stress. So there's also something we would want to consider other than the fact that it could be a good program, maybe consider the student side to it and the implications that it could have.
I, I was just going to say, well, we, we, I think are we, do we have any other questions before I kind of close out and like what's next, Elizabeth?
I think Joyce, Joyce had a question.
Okay.
We agree with Kiara said because I was while listening to you guys answer these questions, I was, I also had questions of my own. Something that I was, I cause I was, was running through my head was what resources that you guys, you know, could provide for us, addressing when you guys were addressing the mental health issues. Because I hear a lot of administrators and teachers say resources, but I'm never told what the resources are. And I feel like it's a constant question of what are the resources and what can students do? Because it's been a prevalent problem and it's not, it's something we've, we've been asking for a long time. And it gets, it gets repetitive hearing resources, but we don't get provided these resources that are being.
Yeah. So I will, I will give one example and I don't know, it's not a high school example and then I can give it over to Dana. And I, only because I really value and honor people's times, I'm gonna take Eli's question and then I'm going to wrap up if, if we don't mind. Cause you know, I just value people's time. I wanna start on time and end on time. At the middle school, as an example, Mr. Principal Burr has created a yoga studio. So in his master's schedule, they've redid their master's schedule and have included classes or electives, I guess I would call it, where students are able to have like a period of mindfulness. So that's like an example. There are some examples, like at the elementary level, at the high school, I know that the counseling department like that, their whole focus this year is around how they can get more resources available to the students at the high school. Did you want to step in before I keep going, Dana?
Um, no, I mean, I can point out one of the, the initiatives, Joyce, that we're going to put together is a mental health fair. That would include some of our community resources. Again, unfortunately, there's that word again, right? But we would be bringing some of those individuals into the school so that students can really start making those connections as to who those individuals are and how they can be utilized to support them. So that, that's just one example of something that we had discussed in a recent meeting that we're going to be putting together for the students. Hopefully around the holidays because we know that that is a very high stress time for students.
And the district on Tuesday night, the twenty sixth, just hired a coordinator for student health and student health and safety. And that individual is coming to the district with close to a decade, if not more of youth services background. So again, a part of the work is recognizing that we're on a journey and that the direction that we take is based upon the impact that we're having on our students. I would love if our, honestly, I would love it if our next town hall, when we're doing a debrief in mid-year, could be something that is completely run by students and the questions come from the students. I was just thinking that about that earlier. Because I, you know, what we're doing should be impacting our students. And I do believe listening to our parent voices is important. But I would love it if we could like maybe, you know, shift that focus for the next town hall. So for those that need to hop off the call, because we are over seven, thank you very much for coming this evening. I would, I would love if we could do some type of quick, for the people who participated, like what your thoughts were about the town hall, if we should use this format again. So I'll figure out how to do that with, with Elizabeth sometime early next week. So final thought, Eli.
Oh, yeah, I was just going to say that I think it'd be a great idea if next time the email sent with the link to submit questions was also sent to all the students, but you essentially already said that. So it sounds great.
Awesome. Well, thank you, everyone that's on the panel for coming out this evening, especially to our students. They have been wonderful. I, I really hope that we could see student voice at every level, on every team. Your input has been incredibly valuable and what I love about the leaders on this call is that they're not just here to ask questions, but they've been really hard at work with helping us come up with various solutions as well. So thank you guys so much. I think we can conclude tonight's town hall. Take care, everyone.
Night.